Just like.
Here.
Sir.
Glad you're legions.
I'd like to ask you to please your main standing and Chief Thompson will lead us in our invocation.
Father, we think the opportunity you got here tonight, Dr. Business of the City, pray you be with us during the meeting. Please be with our city employees and our citizens of this community. Help these leaders to make wise decisions for this community. Send your son's name with grace.
Amen. Okay, please be seated. We'll officially call the meeting to order. Before you, you have the minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, regular five thirty P M. Meeting. Is there a motion?
Not a move.
Motion by Commissioner Cox, second by. Commissioner Sinal, any discussion, anything anyone he wants to addition or correction? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign, motion carries. Item three, departmental and agency reports. Is there anything anyone would like to highlight before we take a vote on this? Everybody good? All right, three, A through K, is there a motion?
Some of us.
Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stroud, any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? Motion carries. Okay, item four, informational items only. I do want to highlight item four B. We are proclaiming today, actually, May sixth, as Arbor Day in the city of Winchester. So I'd like to ask us to join Mrs. Shanda down front and let's do this proclamation.
Often layers in your Winchester, Kentucky, whereas in eighteen seventy two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the director of water agriculture, the special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day, which again is today, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now served throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a swiss, a solution, sorry guys, one more language. A solution to combat climate change by reducing the precious toxic water by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderizing, moderating the temperatures, cleaning the air, producing oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife, very important things for our environment. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fire and countless other good products. And whereas trees in our city contribute property values and enhance the economic vitality of the business area and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and renewal. Whereas Winchester for many years has been recognized as a true city of USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, which desires to continue its planting through tree planting rates. Now therefore, I join the Bay of the City of Winchester, Kentucky, to hereby proclaim and designate May sixth, twenty twenty five, as Arbor Day in the city of Winchester. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and our woodlands and support our community enforcement programs. I further urge all citizens to plant a tree, to light the hearts and promote the well being of present and future generations. You fully accepted by Shannon.
Okay, once everyone's seated, we'll move into our work session. Uh, with us this evening, we have Dave Prieston, the executive director of the Kentucky Alliance of Recovery Resource Residences, and also Greg Smith, who is the director of Government Affairs and Development. So gentlemen, we're turning it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we said, my name is Dane Prieston. Uh, I am the executive director of the Kentucky Alliance of Recovery Residences. And uh, we are the ones that the Cabinet for Health and Family Services contracts with in order to perform the state mandated recovery housing certifications in the state. Uh, and I'll get to really who we are in detail in a minute, but I'll give you just a quick legislative history on how we got to where we are. Uh, back in twenty twenty three, uh, the regular session, the House passed a House Bill two forty eight, which defined recovery residences here in Kentucky, and then also mandated that they achieve certification through one of two cabinet-recognized certifying organizations. At the time, it was the Kentucky Recovery Housing Network, which lived within the Cabinet of Health and Family Services. The other was Oxford House. Uh, now, through doing, actually doing certifications, a gap was found specifically in regards to uh, houses that had licenses for outpatient services. It's a bit muddy at that when you get into that, so I'll skip over it. But also, there was a gap found with cities' ability to enforce certification requirements. So Kentucky Recovery Housing Network's Advisory Board, uh, they amended the statute through House Bill four sixty two, which was passed last year, to better define recovery housing, to only exclude uh, sites that were licensed for residential or inpatient treatment services, and then also uh, give cities teeth and standing to enact ordinances around enforcement of that certification requirement. Now, all throughout that process, uh, the cabinet was in talks with uh, in picks a exterior affiliate, uh, the Virginia Association of Recovery Residences, to contract with to stand up a new organization in Kentucky that would perform the certifications, but also act as an advocacy organization. And that is how we were born, the Kentucky Alliance of Recovery Residences. So as of January, we have come into an, uh, come into existence and have been doing the certifications since. We do grandfather in those uh, certifications that were done by Kentucky Recovery Housing Network, which is where I actually came from. I went to go work for the cabinet in twenty twenty three and then left the cabinet in December of twenty twenty four in order to head up the Kentucky Alliance of Recovery Residences. And what I saw from twenty twenty three on to twenty twenty four was and largely in part due to uh, the certification mandate, an explosion of certifications. So when I came on board, we had fifty one certified houses, and then when I left in December, there was two hundred and eighty eight. As of today, there are over three hundred and twenty five certified houses and come seeing over four thousand beds. We are one of the largest affiliates in the country, uh, which is wonderful to see because uh, for those, uh, for those who know, for those who don't know, recovery is a lifelong journey. Many people think of recovery and they think of treatment. And they think of that thirty day period of someone going into rehab. And really, all treatment does is stabilize an individual. It clears the mind. I know me personally, as someone in long-term recovery, when I entered treatment, I didn't even decide I wanted to be sober really until day forty. So that shows you really how, where most people's heads at are uh, during that first thirty days. And then the importance of strong community-based recovery support services like recovery housing, and specifically quality recovery housing, to allow someone to learn how to live life on life's terms, learn how to run a household, learn how to be a part of a household, while their brains clearing, uh, clearing up uh, from actually getting sober. Uh, science behind your brain actually healing is eighteen to twenty four months after a cessation of use before you're actually back to uh, back to normal. So having a safe and structured environment to live in during that time is vital. And that's really where we come in to make sure that these places are actually adhering to a very specific set of standards. Now, what we certify based off of is the NAR standard, which is the National Alliance for Recovery Residences. They are a national organization uh, that has been recognized by SAMSA and ASAM as the gold standard uh, for recovery residences. Now, what that means for us is that we take this standard, which is applicable to all fifty states, and then we translate it to how it works in Kentucky, specifically when it comes to regulatory requirements and statutory requirements um, as they've come down. The cabinet is currently in the process of drafting amended regulations due to House Bill four sixty two, which passed uh, season before last. So we'll see what those look like when they come out. We've left a decent amount of public comments on that, and we're hoping they take that under advisement. Uh, but to get into the actual certification requirement, it, i- it's very robust. Um, it is lengthy, it takes anywhere from one month to, I've had people in certification process for a year, uh, because it is very intense. Uh, it is a three-phase process. Uh, the first phase involves uh, demonstration of being a legal business entity. Uh, you have to have a filing with the Secretary of State that we can see is in good standing. Uh, you have to have adequate commercial general liability insurance that covers the properties that you're applying for certification for. You have to have a minimum of a million dollars per occurrence commercial liability policy, uh, in the event that something, uh, something happens. Uh, we require people at the outset during that first phase, one, to sign two documents. Oh, or three documents. Uh, one is an attestations document. Uh, this is a document that they have to have notarized that says that they are in compliance with all zoning requirements, that they are a legal business entity, uh, that there's no other violations that, that they are aware of at that time that would preclude them from certi- uh, certification. They have to notarize that document, return that to us. We require them to sign, and all of their employees sign, our K R Code of Ethics. And this is a very lengthy, two-page code of ethics uh, that combines both the national, the NAR Code of Ethics, with other codes of ethics from different professional fields and behavioral health field. Um, at the outset, this way everyone knows what they're getting into and what they have to be held to. Additionally, we ask, ask them to sign, require them to sign our grievance policy. Now, we do this at the very beginning for a few reasons. One, anyone can file a grievance against a recovery residence, whether it be a neighbor, whether it be a city, whether it be a resident, whether it be another operator, anyone can file a grievance against a recovery residence. Now, in order for them to be subject to our grievance policy, they have to sign it and agree to it. So at the outset, we have them sign that grievance policy and turn that into us, and we won't proceed with uh, the certification process until they've done that. And grievances could be anything from uh, this place is allowing drugs and alcohol, it's not, uh, it's not a safe environment. Uh, they are not up to standards when it comes to code enforcement, there could be exposed wires. Uh, we've done, we've gone and investigated numerous different types of grievances. Um, and generally during that process, we're able to work with the operator to help them raise their standards. Uh, we also ask for during that initial phase, a notarized document from the property owner of record, giving that organization permission to operate a recovery residence at that address. It's very specific, and that is a regulatory requirement that I actually pushed for when I was at the cabinet, that it was property owner of record and not property management company. Um, because we, we can't have a situation to where individuals are housed at a recovery residence, and then someone who does own that property, who may have been u- utilizing a property management company, finds out and then tries to expel all the residents. And so for their safety, everyone, um, everyone actually has to be, uh, has to be aware of that there's a pro- uh, there's recovery residents being operated here. Once all that documentation is in, that's the easy part. Uh, then we ask uh, for our phase two documentation, which are all of their policies and procedures. We asked for thirty one different policies and procedures, which I believe are in your handouts there. Um, and that covers everything from recovery planning to uh, a transition plan in the event, uh, continuity of operations plan, drug testing policies. Uh, this is the lengthiest part of the certification process. Because what we've discovered, and something that when I, when I came to work for the cabinet in twenty twenty three, I thought I was gonna find, you know, fifty percent of the people were doing, were here to hurt people, and the other fifty percent of the people are doing things perfectly. Uh, what I've found is that ten percent of the people are doing things perfectly, ten percent of the people are actively trying to harm people, and eighty percent of people have a heart for this mission, but they're just not exactly sure how to execute it properly. And that's where Greg and myself come in, and we're actually in the process of hiring more people as well. Uh, during this phase two process is to go over their policies and procedure documentation with a fine-tooth comb to assist them in getting them to the NAR standard, getting them to the K R standard. Now, this doesn't mean that we write their policies for them, I want to make that very clear. Now, we can lead them to water, but we can't get them to drink themselves, like we actually, like they have to do it themselves. Uh, because what we have found is that if we write someone's policy, they're not gonna understand why it needs to be. It, it may not properly reflect how that program actually operates. So we'll give you the guidance, but you're the one who actually has to do the work. You know, when I was working recovery housing, I used to say the same thing to every man who walked through the door. Like, you may not like me for a while, it's my job to make you uncomfortable, so I don't make you uncomfortable, you're not gonna change. And that's a bit of what this certification process is like, uh, because we didn't get mandatory certification in this state because everyone was above board. We got mandatory certification in this state because there were some bad actors. And so there needed to be some type of regulatory body to oversee them. Now, we are very fortunate in this state that the cabinet has put for the separation of the certifying body uh, with, uh, with us, because there's some implications with co- that come with certifying a recovery residence requiring certification, which I'll get to in a little bit. Uh, but back to the actual certification component itself. Once we've gone back and forth on these policies, and again, this is the lengthiest part of the process, uh, because it's a lot of back and forth, it's a lot of Zoom calls, it might be in-person meetings, uh, it's a lengthy, lengthy process. Uh, then we're able to schedule a site visit. Now, once we uh, schedule a site visit, we send them our phase three guide, which talks about the physical property requirements. Now, we limit space, we limit occupancy in a recovery residence, which again, is a big step when it comes to fair housing, which I'll get to shortly. Uh, we limit occupancy to fifty square feet in each bedroom that, that per, per occupant, that does not include closet, uh, closet space or bathroom space. Now, in that bedroom, there must be room for a nightstand, a dresser, and an area for them to hang clothes as well for each resident. So even though there might be fifty square feet, if it's an oddly shaped room, where there isn't room for that, you can only have one person. Another way that occupants, occupancy is limited is based on number of bathrooms. Um, there can only be one or six residents for every full bathroom, full bathroom, sink, shower, toilet, uh, toilet or tub. And it must be accessible to those residents without having to go outside. Uh, now, again, that is something that we have to be there to truly see it, because some of these places do incorporate like a live-in house manager, and that house manager may have their own private bathroom. Well, if we go in there and the residents aren't allowed to use that bathroom, well, then we wouldn't count that towards the occupancy limitation. So, so while it may seem straightforward with the one bathroom for six people and then fifty square feet, it really does take us to go in and see how things are running properly to determine what exactly is the occupancy that needs to be. Uh, there also is law occupancy limitation based on refrigerator space. Uh, require one full-size refrigerator for each six residents, similar to the bathrooms. There needs to be dry storage, cold storage space for everyone. Uh, there needs to be meeting space, and the meeting space is one of the most important components. Because what we certify based on, one of the largest components is the social model of recovery. That's what a recovery residence has to demonstrate, that social model of recovery component. Studies have shown that that is how these places are successful, going back to the seventies when Antra House started. They've done study after study on how this social model works. And the social model of recovery is based on individuals in recovery uh, from substance use disorder, getting together to live together, share the responsibilities of running a household together, of uh, celebrating, celebrating each other's successes, of helping each other through challenges, of finding jobs themselves, of sharing the responsibility of running that household, of doing chores, of buying groceries, of eating together, living as a cohesive family unit, and replacing the negative connections that they had in addiction with the positive connections of that family that they have built in recovery. And that's why we see success, and that's why we see extended stays in recovery residences that are based on the social model, a huge boom to cities, to counties, to state governments, because then these people aren't going back to jail. These people aren't going back to addiction because they've replaced all these negative connections, and now they're moving fo- uh, moving forward in life. Now, once we've done all of that and confirmed that it all meets the standard, uh, we send them our certification compliance agreement. That certification compliance agreement essentially uh, nails them to all of the NAR standards, that this is exactly everything that you're agreeing to uh, utilize in your house, and if you violate any of the, uh, these, you may be subject to either a plan for remediation or revocation of certification, which means that you would have to shut down. Now, as I said, it's a very robust certification process, right? Um, it does take a long time to go through. Now, what does this mean for you guys? What does this mean for cities? Uh, enforcement of this certification requirement, even though it is a state law, enforcement of it has fallen to the cities and counties. There's a hundred and twenty counties in the state of Kentucky, and the cabinet only had two people assigned to this. So there's not many people from that level that are gonna be able to enforce it, and so the forces of the directive was to uh, reach out to cities and talk to them about best practices and uh, drafting ordinances to enforce certification requirement. Now, I think I wrote those best practices back in November, and they're still sitting in their uh, review queue. Uh, so here we are uh, now in May, and now I get to actually come out here and talk to you about what are the best practices. Now, I alluded to this earlier about the Fair Housing Act. Now, individuals in recovery are considered a protected person uh, under the Fair Housing Act, which means that cities can enact zoning regulations uh, that do not, uh, that impede their access to housing or create zoning restrictions, uh, or any type of regulation that would affect them or discriminate against them the way they wouldn't a single-family unit. Uh, and we've seen other cities in the state enforce a certification requirement through uh, ordinances that facially violate the Fair Housing Act. Uh, specifically to the city of Litchfield and the city of Elizabeth Town. Uh, have created an ordinance that uh, creates a recovery residence compliance officer. Uh, this is an individual who is, has police powers, who inspects sober living houses every ninety days, which a ba- badge, body camera and gun. Something that was lost on the city and whoever suggested this ordinance to them at the outset was these aren't treatment centers, these are people's homes. I know I personally wouldn't appreciate if a police officer was inspecting my house every ninety days. Now, if they came in with a warrant and they needed to uh, search it, then absolutely. But this is unacceptable that this is how, uh, what this has come to, and it is a facially discriminatory ordinance when it comes to fair housing. And these cities will end up buying an attorney out of D C. A brand-new Bentley uh, when someone actually does uh, come out and challenge it. So we are doing our best to meet with cities and talk about best practices uh, on how to create an ordinance that holds recovery residences accountable, gives the city teeth to go after recovery residences that are not meeting the certification standards, but still protects the rights of the residents, uh, since they're the ones that are really caught in the middle, uh, middle of this. And so we did draft a model ordinance, uh, which we did provide to the mayor um, at our meeting, which we were very grateful for the meeting a couple of months ago. Uh, we do appreciate that, that we feel uh, does enforce a certification requirement and provides an incentive for recovery residences who have not already achieved certification to go through the certification process, but not being so intrusive as to require them to be inspected more than they need to. We already go out at least annually um, to prov- uh, to do annual site visits on top of uninspe- uh, unannounced site visits as a result of a grievance investigation. So we're already out there doing it, and we know what, uh, we know what to look for. Now, it doesn't mean that our certification supersedes any zoning or uh, code enforcement requirement the city has. Uh, in fact, that's actually specifically defined in statute. Uh, that nothing in the statute or certification supersedes anything uh, when it comes to uh, code enforcement and zoning. And that's also part of our attestations document that I mentioned earlier. Uh, but to the model ordinance, what, what we feel is the proper way to go about it is empowering the local code enforcement board to be the ones to find a recovery residence if they're not certified, but solely based on that certification. Now, if they are certified, then there's no need to bother them for, for lack of a better word. But if they're not certified, uh, we created a fines, or we suggest a fine schedule of a hundred dollars per day for every residence that is out of compliance, but that, and this is because most recovery residences operate on a shoestring budget as it is. And so that's a big fine for them, that these fines actually go into a forbearance account, or they don't become due for a period prescribed by the city while they apply for certification. And if they get certified within that period of time, then the fines become, uh, get dismissed or they get returned. Uh, that's, that's what we feel is, is the best way to go about it. Uh, but that's, that's really all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the certification process, about recovery housing in general um, at all.
Anyone have questions for Dane?
I know this is one of those things that everybody thinks is a good idea, as long as it's in somebody else's neighborhood.
Yeah.
And having a relative who has been in four different ones of these in three different communities, the same relative, she, you know, I, and having visited her there, I understand that completely. And she, you know, it, it's once again, everybody thinks it's a good idea to one opens up down the end block. And you have a lot of traffic and, and things like that, can, you know, and that's scary part for people. There needs to be understanding by the residents and, and there was an infant in, in Maria, I know, where nobody contacted the neighbors around them when this was going, that this house was going to open. And I think there needs to be some kind of communication with the people that are going to live around it with their kids, that hey, this is what we're going to do with this house. And this is, this is why you don't have to worry about it.
So, um, you addressed two points there. One, something I failed to mention as part of that phase two process is that re- that recovery residents are required to have a written good neighbor policy. Uh, this is a written policy around practices on being a good neighbor. Um, and then what to do, what the residents are supposed to do in the event that a neighbor has a concern, specifically that they're supposed to advise staff and provide the neighbor with staff's phone number or a grievance form if they so choose. Um, you should never know there's a sober living house on the block. The only reason you should know it's, that it's a sober living house because it's the best-looking house on the block. Uh, that is generally what we see on places that are operating ethically and above board is that they're the places whose trash is always picked up, they're the ones whose grass is always mowed. Uh, they're usually the best-looking house on the block. Now, notice requirements are actually something that have been decided at the federal level, and i- is no different than saying that a black family moving into the neighborhood has to alert their neighbors that they're moving in to give them a chance to object.
Anything else? So in our packet, um, we do have the draft ordinance. And I'm not sure if everyone's had the time to read it and to really comprehend everything that Dane has shared with us. If, if no one disapproves, I'm gonna ask that we all take this home, reread it again. Come back at our next meeting with more questions, and if you want to, we'd love to have you back.
Of course.
Um, and can I see what we think if we want to go in this direction or not? I do love the idea of certified recovery houses uh, versus someone just saying, I'm gonna open a recovery uh, home in my house tomorrow, and you know, I'm gonna put ten people in it, and nobody really cares. I think this um, uh, reaches out and touches the people that we needed to touch, and it also helps our community with the, with the issues that we have with drug usage. So, um, does that sound like a plan to everybody? Take it, read it, mark it up.
And maybe let it be known that we're going to do this next meeting so we could have some public comment to.
We take care of that, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah.
Didn't get it out?
To get uh, Mr. Dykman to review this as well.
Yes.
Yeah, go through that, but this is just the first introduction to this for you all, and uh, you can be thinking about it, so.
Have you found any resistance to it? You said you're in three hundred and twenty-five houses, have you essentially closed any one down?
So, we've only revoked certification on one property that was in Northern Kentucky that was certified, that uh, we've received a gre- in a grievance that uh, the tubs were leaking, there was holes in the walls. Um, it was not a good look, it was, and it was two apartment complexes. And so I went up within forty-eight hours, uh, inspected, there was twelve apartment units in each building, I inspected all twenty-four units, uh, took pictures, there was major issues. Um, I sent them my findings and where that violated our standard, uh, which is the residence is clean, well-maintained, and a good repair, uh, with a list of everything, and that there's no fire hazards, safety hazards. Uh, they submitted a plan for mediation, which I altered and then approved, which gave them ninety days to fix everything, because there was some major issues, including drywalling a ceiling. Um, I went back out after a prescribed period of time, they had not made the necessary changes. And so we did revoke their certification, which uh, per the regulations, gives them a thirty-day wind down period to move residents out. And at that point, I was able to notify other, our other certified operators in the Northern Kentucky area that there's gonna be, you know, forty-eight people who are gonna need housing. And that's something that we will, even if we do have to revoke certification and someone needs to shut down, like, we never want to see someone on the street, which is why we fought for that thirty-day one. like, we never want to see someone on the street, which is why we fought for that thirty-day wind down period, but also we will work with that operator to at bet to the best of our ability to connect them with other certified operators in the area to find alternative housing. Because it doesn't help anybody when they're put out on the street. That doesn't help the city, that doesn't help the resident, and we do this for the residents. So the best thing that we can do is connect them with other operators.
Are there any other like qualifiers or certifications that, and I'm not looking for like a competitive edge, but that maybe someone here in town already has that you would think, okay, they're making the effort to to do the right thing to do this and like they could fall in line with this. Is there anything before what's happened here?
Uh, I'm not sure what you mean.
Is there a different, I don't know, is there a different entity that provides some type of certification? For a similar situation?
Uh, no, not really. Uh, so before us, there was Kentucky Recovery Housing Network uh which are still doing certifications, but that's uh it's more dealing with the backlog that they had. Uh, we're the ones doing the doing the certifications now. Uh, we can go age in history and we actually did contract the state of Tennessee, their affiliate to come up and do some certifications, but there's no other organization that is approved by, oh, there's Oxford House as well. Sorry, I need to clarify that. Uh, there is Oxford House as well, but there's no other cabinet approved certifying organization. We are the only one that is approved by the Cabinet for Health and Family Services to perform the certification.
Thank you.
No problem. And something I do want to say, if anyone does want to reach out to us directly, we're always happy to have unofficial meetings uh to answer questions because this is, that's the point of us is to go around and spread knowledge because that there is a lot of misconceptions about recovery housing about and like, sir, to your, to your point about the nose requirement, like, I get it, absolutely. Um, like, that's something that we came across in Lexington, that's something that we come across a lot of places, but because the, because of people in recovery being protected under the Fair Housing Act, that specific law has been uh argued in court.
Well, I know there was one over on Park Street in Lexington near the UK campus and the police were literally there more than they were at the fraternity offshoot up the street, you you know.
Absolutely, and what that is, it's a pretend recovery residence. It is someone wearing the mask of recovery residence.
And I own the property three houses down from it.
Yeah, and what, so part of a much larger battle that we're fighting is with um this combination of recovery housing and outpatient services where their treatment center is disguised as recovery residences. Uh, we are trying to shift the state into a better direction when it comes to that, to provide regulation to places that currently do not have a regulation. There is a licensing licensing branch, program integrity, that licenses AODE facilities, alcohol or other drug treatment entity facilities. Uh, they don't have a license for this, for a type of organization where there's not clinical services taking place on site. But what we have found is that people are backdooring their way into residential treatment by storing people that are recovery or claiming to be a recovery residence and then having them do clinical services at a different building. I have, I'd bet dollars to donuts, that's what you are seeing, because those places are typically run like trap houses. Those places are not real recovery residences, there isn't real recovery happening there. So we are in the process of working with the cabinet, working with program integrity, of drafting our standards to push people in the right direction and and some of it's not necessarily their fault, it just, it's we expanded access to treatment in this state a lot and we've get, we've been able to provide treatment to a lot of people. Unfortunately, that's allowed some individuals to take advantage of that and then teach others how to do it by claiming it's the right way. So we're doing our best to advocate and educate around the state when it comes to that as well. And really, like, they should be the best looking house on the block, there shouldn't be. If there's police there every other night, then they're either not providing a safe environment, that doesn't meet the standard, they wouldn't, they would have their certification revoked. Uh, there's drugs and alcohol on property, not providing a safe uh safe environment, certification revoked, not providing a drug-free envi- environment. Uh, there's fights on on the property, that's why the police are getting called. Like, if police are being called regularly, that's more, that's no longer sober living house at that point, because there's something else going on there that wouldn't meet our standard. And at that point, I would highly suggest that you reach out to us uh so that we can investigate that property. Uh, we have contacts within the city of Lexington, we have contacts with a lot of different local governments that when someone does report, even if it's not certified and it's not under our purview, we will definitely alert the city, hey, there's a supposed recovery residence here, they're avoiding the certification, they are not compliant to the state statute. No one wants to shut these bad actors down more than us. So we welcome the communication and our email, just like our main email address is info@kyarr.org, I N F O at K Y A R R dot O R G. Anyone is having issues with a recovery residence, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. And we all do do our best to either educate the individual on the best practices or reach out to local municipality and see about possibly shutting them down if they're refusing to comply with the state statute.
Okay, Mr. Dyckman?
Yes?
Um, would you review this ordinance for us the same?
Yes, I've I've reviewed it when we, after we met uh about a month ago. Uh, we were, we were waiting to see what um what Lexington had done, I think they were gonna use part of it, uh, maybe make their own, uh, and I haven't heard whether they've actually completed that. Have they, Dave? Do you know?
Yeah, so um the attorney who drafted the Lexington ordinance uh took some advice from a group of individuals that might have led them down the wrong path. There was a first reading of their ordinance and their city council sent him back to the drawing board. Uh, they created a situation where in order to operate a recovery residence, you would need a business license, zoning permit, recovery residence license and a certification before opening, all which is predicated on the certification, which is not possible without it being open in the first place. So uh he was asked whether or not he had collaborated with us and he had to say no. Um, so we we have reached out to them again to uh in an attempt to collaborate to uh to try and better that ordinance. Because right now, the the city council has said this is no good, we can't do anything with this.
Dane, you have a question, go ahead.
These, these places don't have to have a business license? Because most of them are for-profit entity, aren't they?
Sure, so we require them to have a filing with the Secretary of State. Now, if the city requires them to have a business license, as long as it's not five hundred dollars or some astronomical, it's not discriminatory, uh, then uh it's not too big an administrative burden for them, then that's okay.
Well, we've got one business license fee for everybody.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that's fine, as long as it's not uh it's, the fair housing protections are as long as it doesn't restrict their access to housing. So if it, it can't be something like a regulation place that makes it overly difficult to open a recovery residence, and so a regularly priced business license uh would not, would not fall into that category, is overly discriminatory or too large a burden. But to what they were requiring, which the zoning permit, the business license and the recovery residence license and the certification creates two owners process and we feel would be in violation of fair housing.
Chief Thompson, we'd also like to ask you to weigh in on this at the May twentieth meeting. Is that possible? You can come back, Dane, on the twentieth?
I'll look at my calendar, I believe I can.
Mr. Dr. Manley know if you can do that or not. And um you know, you stop and you think about it, you got substance abuse on one hand, but then you got the recovery on the other hand. And people need to feel safe and secure when they're going through that. I've had an opportunity since I've been mayor to talk to a lot of people that are going through abuse and recovery, and they need encouragement, they need safety, and and I like the idea of being certified. So we'll just take this up again at the May twentieth meeting, if you're able to attend. We'd love for you to be here.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have time, I believe, to go to closed session. Is there anyone at the table that has a closed session item? Uh, Mr. Dyckman, anything for closed session?
I I've spoken to the city manager, I think he has uh a an item for uh, yes, for closed session.
So you have something?
Yes, ma'am.
And then uh we need to go in for also with potential litigation, KRS Chapter sixty-one, eight, ten, C. And also for property acquisition, KRS Chapter sixty-one, eight, ten, B. And uh Chris, is there anything that either Commissioner Chanel or Commissioner Cox need to recuse theirself in what you're going to be presenting in closed session? Okay. You want them to go ahead and do it so it's on the record? Okay, Commissioner Fox?
Right now, I'll make the motion that we go and then I will make the proviso that Commissioner Chanel and I will not be there.
You you make your recusal and let Joe make his, okay?
I recuse myself. I have to attend.
Okay, we will go into closed session and be back in here.
Need a second?
Uh, I'll second that. I think Hannah's already kind of given me the nod down there. Okay, all in favor, aye? Any opposed by a like sign? Joe, Shannon, don't wander off. We'll be back. Okay, Chris, if you want to come on and go with us?
Why not? Why not?
City Commissioner, I'd like to ask for a motion. I'd like to ask for a motion to go out, close the four-thirty session. Same moves. By Commissioner Tool, second by Commissioner Cox, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, we are now uh adjourned to four-thirty session. Now, let's switch over to the five-thirty session. And I'm going to ask everyone to please stand and Ms. Diana Lane, our deputy city clerk, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by Dr. Manley with the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our degracious seven father, we just thank you for this day, we thank you for this gift of life, we thank you and that we can come together to lead this city, dear father, we thank you for wisdom and ask for discernment. We just uh ask to list, lift up all of our first responders um and all of our city employees and remember our community, uh may it be blessed and prosper, in Jesus's name we pray.
Amen. Okay, we'll officially call the five-thirty meeting to order. Uh, first item or item number two actually is a proclamation for mental health month and I believe Ms. Harrington is here. So if you would uh meet me here at the podium and ask the commission to come down front and I bring you my glasses this time?
Okay, mental health awareness month twenty twenty-five. Turn awareness into action. Whereas mental health includes our emotional, psychological and social well-being, it affects how we think, feel and act. It also affects how we meet stress, relate to others and make choices. And whereas mental health is important for our individual well-being and our talent as well as that of our families, communities and businesses. And whereas nearly one in five US adults will have a diagnosable mental health condition in any given year and more than forty-two point five million US adults live with anxiety disorder, the most common mental health condition in America. And whereas May first through the thirty-first, twenty twenty title is recognized as mental health awareness month with the theme Turn Awareness Into Action, which celebrates the progress we make and recognizes the importance of mental health and turning understanding into meaningful steps toward change. And whereas mental health management ensures that individuals can focus their abilities to live, work, learn and contribute to our society. And whereas increased systems of care for vulnerable population, access to non-emergent and crisis services and advanced integrated physical and behavioral healthcare along with provider relations, help fortified services coordinated by local agencies. And whereas each business, tour, government agency, healthcare provider, organization and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and have a responsibility to promote mental health, mental wellness and prevention effort. Now therefore, I, Joel Murray, give your back the plane, May twenty twenty-five, as mental health awareness month in Winchester, Kentucky, and call all local citizens, government agencies, institutions, businesses and schools to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps to protect our citizens' mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Day is the sixth day of May twenty twenty-five, Joel Murray, Mayor.
There you go, Ms. Harrington.
Recognizing and getting this done for us, uh, mental health is so important and our organization, NAMI National Alliance on Mental Health and Security, uh Winchester, is working hard to to help anyone that is suffering with the mental health process.
Did you bring us all a brochure?
I did.
And, you know, mental health is in everyone's life and everyone's family and we don't realize just the stressful situations that we get in sometimes, how much they are up there. Our little health, we need to make a concentrated effort to keep it up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we done?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington.
Okay, let's go to item three, new business. And folks, I want you to kind of understand, you're going to see some movement back and forth, we're going to be talking about Lincoln Street. And in that conversation, uh Commissioner Chanel will have to excuse himself because his wife is an heir to some of the property on Lincoln Street. Commissioner Cox will have to recuse himself and they will both state that in just a moment because he is on the board, the Habitat Board. So Commissioner Fox?
Yes, I will be stepping out in the hall as a member of the Habitat Board.
Okay, Mr. Chanel?
I will be stepping out because my wife is part of property on Lincoln Street.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We'll come get you in a few. And uh I'd like to call Ms. Chris Lowry of Chris Lowry and Associates, who is all things Lincoln Street, to come forward and explain to us what we're doing here this evening and what we need to do.
Um, yes, look, uh, our project attorney, uh, John Roth, we're representing them uh while doing the title searches on all the properties that we need to acquire, is part of the Lincoln Street Phase Two project, found that uh on one of those properties, fifteen Lincoln Street, that there's a number of liens against that property and one of those lien holders has uh filed a lawsuit to foreclose on that property. Um, because of that, we think it's uh just needs to be we we need to move forward with it as soon as possible to acquire it. Um, so I think the only way we're going to be able to get clear title is through a condemnation proceeding on that property.
Okay, I'm assuming we probably need a motion?
Okay, do you want me to bring up the other one also?
Uh, let's go ahead and do this one first.
So, yeah, so that this will recommending that the city authorize our attorney, project attorney, to proceed with a condemnation, eminent domain condemnation on fifteen Lincoln Street.
That's correct. So I will make a motion under KRS Chapter four sixteen, five forty to four sixteen, six eighty, eminent domain act of Kentucky. The motion is to authorize the filing of an eminent domain condemnation for fifteen Lincoln Street. Is there a motion? I made the motion. I'll second it. Thank you, Mr. Tool. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Now let's go ahead and do your one.
Okay, um, the the other item of business we had on Lincoln Street is that we got uh cost estimates proposals from various surveyors to do the property surveys and to replant the property once we actually do acquire them. And Abby Jones Consulting was the, gave us the best hope on that. So I think uh we need the council commission to approve hiring Abby Jones Consulting as the uh property surveyor for the project.
Madam clerk, will you read Order six B?
Yes, just a second. An order approving a contract with Abby Jones Consulting for land surveying services through the Commonwealth of Kentucky for the co- uh community development block grant for, grant for Lincoln Street redevelopment project phase two.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Strode, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Tool, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Lowry. Appreciate all that you're doing to help us on Lincoln Street. Thank you very much. Do you want to, John, do you need to make a commentary thing at this point?
No.
Okay, all right, let's go to uh, whoop. Let me see here, let's get Shannon and Joe. We don't want this to look like the women's club up here.
Should I take a piss tonight?
Mm-hmm. Probably should. Hope they didn't go to Speedway. They do that sometimes. Sorry, guys. They're supposed to be outside that door. He saved them, so. Ma'am, put this in the paper. We had two AWOL, the police chief went to find them. Yeah, there you go. Well, they are eating.
And I told you.
I'm going to Costco tomorrow, I'll get you some stuff.
All right, I need one.
Okay, okay.
All right, let's go to item four, second reading, Madam Clerk. Ordinance.
This is a summary and ordinance annexing to the city of Winchester, Kentucky, certain land in Clark County, Kentucky. Identified as all that certain tract or parcel of land lying and being in. Clark County, Kentucky being twenty-three point five one five acres, more or less. Situated on the western side of the corporate limits of the city of Winchester, Kentucky. I hereby certify that the foregoing is an accurate summary of the contents of the above entitled ordinance, with me, Dyckman, City Attorney.
Okay, is there a motion? I'm going to, before the motion?
Pro moved.
Commissioner Cox, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tool. And I will now ask you, Madam Clerk, to do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Chenault?
Yes.
Commissioner Strode?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Tool?
Yes.
Okay, let's move to item five. You want to go on down and pick up C right now, Madam Clerk?
I think this is why Mr. Roth is here.
Okay, all right, so let's pick up. We don't know where we're. Okay, Joy, should we go ahead and pick up C since John's here? Okay, you want to go ahead and read that?
An ordinance approving the change of zoning classification of attractive land containing twenty-three point seven three acres, more or less. Located at thirty-three fifteen Colby Road, Winchester, Kentucky, from agricultural A-one zoning to planned development PD zoning.
Okay, let's go ahead and take our vote and then we will have some discussion.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Pro moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cox, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, for discussion, John, you're going to help us with this because the first.
Well, I mean.
Ordinance we. Okay.
You know, the only comment I have to make is that twenty-three point seven three acres. That should be twenty-three point three one five acres, just like the animation was. And I think probably it all kind of arose from the fact that the application for the zoning. At this twenty-three point seven three, but the map of the zoning is twenty-three, twenty-three, one, five.
And ours says five one five.
Five one five, that's right, so five one. So the vote should be twenty-three, five, five.
Five one five, Brian?
The twenty, that's right, the twenty-seven three is what we use for the development plans. They then did an actual survey and then actually found out we were a little bit hot. So that should be reflected to be twenty-three point five.
It is one five, or in in the description you have, and everything is five.
Okay.
The description that was spread is the the needs and balance description as well as the survey description, five.
So we'll just go back and amend the motion? And change the twenty-three point seven three acres to twenty-three point five one five acres, is that correct, guys?
Correct.
Okay, who made that motion?
I did.
Okay, Commissioner Cox, are you willing to change the acreage? And the second was?
Ms. Ms. Tool.
Commissioner Tool, you okay with changing your second? To reflect the new acreage? It's to check, reflects the new acreage?
Yes, ma'am, that's good.
Which is twenty-three point five one five. Okay, any further discussion commissioners? All in favor, aye? Aye. Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Thank you, anything else, guys, that we need to, we're done, okay? Okay, let's go, Madam Clerk, to. Five, eight.
This is a summary and ordinance annexing to the city of Winchester, Kentucky, certain land in Clark County, Kentucky, identified. As all that certain tract or parcel of land lying and being in Clark County, Kentucky, being thirty-one point eight one eight acres. More or less situated on the southwestern side of the corporate limits of the city of Winchester, Kentucky.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Commissioner Tool, second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, item five, B.
An ordinance annexing to the city of Winchester, Kentucky, certain land in Clark County, Kentucky, identified as all that certain tract or parcel of land lying and being in Clark County, Kentucky, being four point two two five acres, more or less. Situated on the southwestern side of the corporate limits of the city of Winchester, Kentucky.
Is there a motion?
Pro moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cox, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries. And we have done five C. All right, ready to go to six, general orders, Madam Clerk, six A.
An order declaring certain city of Winchester property to be obsolete and surplus.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cox, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, six B, we have done, six C, Madam Clerk?
An order transferring property at one twenty-four Holly Avenue, Winchester, Kentucky, from the city of Winchester to Land Path LLC.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Strode, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Chenault, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, item six D.
An order approving an extension of completion to Todd Johnson Contracting Incorporated for the Fulton Road Extension Project.
Okay, is there a motion?
Well.
Motion by Commissioner Chenault, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion?
I would like to discuss this, please, Mayor.
Okay.
Um, so I served on the Public Works Board up until January of this year. So I'm somewhat familiar with this project. In some more depth than maybe I would have been otherwise. So it's my understanding that this project was initially to be done. In. May of this year, correct?
Well, it was really.
September eighth, excuse me.
Well, it's September.
Yes, I missed mine out there. So it was about a five-month project to be completed early September, we granted, or. Maybe, I don't remember the commission voting on it, we granted an extension. In August. That brought it to, currently, I have my dates wrong, maybe, I'm looking at minutes, but we have already done an extension.
We did an extension to until April twenty-fourth.
April twenty.
Last one.
Yes, and so with. That we received a letter the day after, on April twenty-fifth, requesting. Um, the extension. And I just, I'm not a contractor, but I don't really understand what the challenge has been, this has been a five-month project that all of a sudden is a. Eighteen-month project. Um, I'm unsure if there's been a fee schedule that's been placed upon all of these extensions. Um, I understand that weather happens and things happen that are out of our control, but. I also think there's a lot of things that are in our control and that we need to be sticking to our contracts and holding. Um, our contractors. Accountable for their timing and if we can't fall within certain parameters. I would hope that the project lead would try to find ways to go above and beyond and not continuously ask for extensions with less than. Adequate time, I would think you would know. With plenty of time that you need more. And as maybe former educators in the room, I mean, would you ever granted anyone an extension the day it was due? Maybe, maybe not, maybe, or the day after it was due, for that matter.
Maybe.
Um, so. For that reason, I vote against the extension and I'd be interested to see a fee schedule tied to it.
Okay, let me make a couple of comments if that's okay to everyone, Jeremy Johnson is in the room with us this evening. With Todd Johnson. We had a meeting, was it last week, Jeremy? Week, last week, week before last, and he can tell you I was not a happy camper, is that correct? And I looked him in the eyeball and I literally said to Jeremy, uh, last week. Jeremy, if this project, if we approve this August thirty-first and is not completed. By August thirty-first, you start being fined on a daily basis. A minimum of a hundred dollars per day until the project is completed. I will say that Mr. Johnson was was very nice in explaining, you know, we have had terrible weather, we've had. Floods, we've had snowstorms, we've had ice storms, we've had windstorms. We've had it all and I am okay with this being the very last extension, if not, there'll be payment accompanied along with the extension. I sent some pictures down that Jesse has taken to show the progress that's been made since we met two weeks ago, that looks looking really nice. And I asked that the commission bear with this one last time and let's get this project done. So.
I would consider an extension to June thirty-first and then the hundred dollar fee after that. Not that this is a court case, but that's just mine.
Well, the initial.
Or June thirtieth.
The initial. Contract was three hundred dollars a day, wasn't it?
Kind of feel like we're writing contracts and not sticking to them, or we're having applications for things and we're not upholding the regulations that go with them. Feel like that's been a thing lately.
Well, Hannah, you know, I still sit on Public Works as well and I agree with you, it's not been a. Good project, but I think we're to the point now that we want the project to be finished. And done correctly, and I don't think they can be true by the end of June.
I guess I wonder, you know, the general practice is awarding to the lowest bidder, correct, so. At this point. How many things have gone wrong and how many things have been paid for and the time lost? I mean, are we just?
Construction.
I mean, we're already over cost, I'd imagine.
Mr. Ward, would you like to address this force? Would you come and address this force?
Construction appears on the weather.
Sure, I mean, but you know, if you're under a deadline, I mean, I personally will find every moment of my day if I'm supposed to accomplish something within the timeframe, especially if I'm hired to do something, but.
Brian Ward, Pomer Engineering, let's let him address that if you would.
Could you, what question do you want answered?
I didn't really get a question answered. I was just kind of stating.
The project, the weather, I mean, what, what?
Well, we.
You do this every day in your.
Time, um. Also, there have been a lot of utilities that had to be relocated for the project, I know. There was a gas main that took the gas company quite a while to relocate, which caused some delays upfront. Uh, we ran it, there's a existing sewer line that was planned to build over. But however, condition of the sewer line, it being clay and things of that nature. We took a strong look at it, it's like, you know, we started adding, the sewer line is probably going to cause problems in the future. So it was elected to do some cost sharing of other entities and replace that sewer line, which. Mr. Johnson did, which caused extra time and things of that nature, there's other utilities that were unknown that are in the way. Some utilities were mismarked by locate companies such as Underground Cable and. Electric that are in the process of being relocated as well. I mean, this project, you know, we're weaving in and out of a developed area and there's a lot of unknowns that's. That's been in place and it's caused time delays on top of weather delays. And you, and before winter and after winter, you can't just. Take the days before and the days after because winter has an effect on a project, it degrades the ground and things of that nature, so you've got. A week or two of time, you have to just get back to where you were before the bad weather hit. And since the weather's broke, uh, he's been doing what's called finish grading. And there's specific moisture conditions that have to be met. And with rain delays and things of that nature. You know, he's, he can't just go to work right after it rains, he has to wait a specific amount of time afterwards before he can even mobilize back on the job and continue working and then. Uh, yeah, it's drug on, uh, we would like to have seen it done quicker, uh. But you know, there are some reasons for, that I just mentioned, the delays. Uh, you know, but I think he's in the home stretch now, as anyone's been out there, he's moving really fast. There's still some obstacles to overcome, we've got a guy wire in the way from the utility company, it's in the process of being relocated, but. He can work around that, he's making efforts to work around. Uh, utilities that are in the way, rather than just relocate, he on his own had exposed and moved utilities. To keep the project moving, so he's making, he's making sincere effort to keep things moving forward. And, uh, but. You know, if he was just out there, you know, scratching around and wasn't pushing, then I would be in agreement and say, well, no, he's not trying. But if anybody's been out there in the last, since the weather's broke, broke, you could see that he's making a sincere effort and. With that sincere effort, I would, I would recommend that we granting this one extension and say, keep it up, move forward and you know, this is.
This last extension.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's where I'm at with it, should it have been done? Uh, yes, it probably should have been done, uh, but. You know, give and take, there's been a lot of roadblocks that he's had to overcome.
I understand, I'm not questioning anyone's sincerity, but five months to seventeen months is wide a difference.
And I didn't know you were going to be here tonight, but when I saw you, thank you, I didn't mean to catch you.
I thought you were going to be here.
But. When I was over there around in the, especially in the. Quick shot. Neighborhood last. From summer and fall, I didn't see a lot of work being done.
Yeah.
And times when the weather was perfect for work. And there's equipment that is sitting there. Not, yeah, doing anything, maybe they had other jobs somewhere else too that they were working on. But but you know what, that, that's not my concern.
Yep, that is true.
I don't care if they're working in Danville and Herdberg and. New Haven, for that matter.
Yep.
I do recall a small work crew. It was my understanding when I was on Public Works that they maybe had about four people out at a time.
Yeah, yeah, I do know last year, the big delays was gas relocation, getting the gas line out of the way. And redoing the sewer line and waiting on manhole structures on the professional roadside, there was quite a bit of delay for that. Uh, but other than that, that's, yeah. I mean, could, could he have probably done better, well, yeah, I mean, anyone can probably do better, but at the same time. Yeah, we are where we are.
I think most of the end of the project and I think that's what we're interested in now is getting.
It's the last section of a fifty-year project.
Literally fifty-year project.
Yeah, yeah, fifty-some years, I think.
How much time would you think you need to complete the project?
It's got till August thirty-first.
August thirty-first, first, but everything buttoned down, seated and demodulized is what. The plan is.
With the weather permitting?
Yes, with the weather permitting, but at the same time, I can't answer that, that's the contractor's schedule and his work. But there's definitely between now and August thirty-first, there should be more than ample time to complete the project.
And I hate to say it this way, it is what it is. And we need to continue going forward and get this off our plate.
Yep.
And Joey, did we have a motion?
You had a motion and a second.
Okay, and who were those?
Uh, Commissioner Chenault made the motion and Commissioner Strode seconded.
Okay.
And last comment, I mean, this date has weather delays built into it, that's why. We could have came in here with a sooner date and all agreed and then came back and done this again, but. This, you know, cut deep, cut longs and finishing. Uh, so that, that's where we are.
And I believe after our conversation a couple of weeks ago, they kicked in and made a lot of progress. Uh, and I, I support finishing the project and we will commission, you know, let's, if the project's not finished by August thirty-first. We'll start the fines and we'll decide at that time what those fines will be. So, thank you, Brian.
Yeah, and the fines are defined in the con, in the contract.
Right.
I hope moving forward with other projects, we stick to our contracts and what our fine schedule is.
Thank you, is, uh, all in favor, aye?
I would ask for a voice vote on this.
Okay. The commissioner?
Commissioner Chenault.
Yes.
Commissioner Strode.
Yes.
Commit, uh, Mayor Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
No.
Commissioner Tool?
No.
Okay, motion passes three to one.
Three to two.
Three to two, can't count tonight, thank you very much. Okay, item seven, personnel orders, seven A through D.
An order reclassifying Brian Wells from maintenance worker two to operator one.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, seven B.
An order reclassifying a wedding on the hunt from police officer three. An order reclassifying waiting on the hat from police officer three to assistant code enforcement.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Chanel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cox, any discussion? I do want to say, uh, Leon came into the office this week and he's pretty excited about. Helping with code enforcement and I think he'll do a wonderful job and we need him. All in favor, aye? Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, item seven C.
An order reclassifying Jesse McLean Fire Department.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Tool, is there a second? Or second by Commissioner Chanel, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries, item eight, comment.
Sorry.
What?
I was going to read the order.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
An order accepting the resignation of Jacob Sawyer, part-time EMT.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Cox, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed by a like sign, motion carries. Item eight, comments from the general public concerning items not on the agenda, Madam Clerk, did any want?
There was one, but the name got scratched off.
Okay. Alright.
We're good, okay.
Okay, let's, uh, go comments from Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager and City Attorney, let's start with Commissioner Tools, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright.
Um. So, we're doing another animal shelter towel donation drive, Diana helped me do on two Christmases ago and it was very successful. So there are currently been set up outside in the lobby of City Hall. Um, in the lobby of the library and College Park Gym, working to get a few more, but those are there for sure. Again, accepting used or new towels, I'm sure she would take quilts. Anything that she can cut up and use and just drop them in those bins and we'll make sure they get to them, I think we had so many last time, she had to share them with other animal shelters. Which is a good problem, is that?
That it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and thank you for doing that. Uh, Commissioner Cox.
Uh, got. Couple of things, uh, May the seventeenth, which is next Saturday, I think. Is the fiftieth anniversary of Clark County. Community Services. And, uh, that is, that is a. We don't know how fortunate we are in this community to have that concentrated effort from people. Volunteers and the food pantry and the clothing. Bank and CC's closet and housing assistance and I can go on and on and on, utility assistance, that's, that's. Just. What, what they do over there is just unbelievable, also, I want to recognize the. Passing of two people who I was fortunate enough to consider friends in my life. One is. Linville Puckett that passed away two weeks ago, uh. Linville was a three-time All-State basketball player and in nineteen fifty-one, when. GRC won the state tournament, he was the MVP of the state tournament. Also, Gene Lane. Who was, who. Tragic death of Gene Lane who passed away Saturday morning, I think, after a fire. Gene was eighty-nine and was still working as the nursing home, um, budsmen. Here in town. And, uh, one last thing, on a personal note, I just want to thank everyone for the love and support and. And everything that I received with the passing of my. Brother a couple of weeks ago and, uh. You can't do these things alone, you have to have. Family to get through these things and you have to have friends and I appreciate every.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Mr. Strode? And we've been keeping you in our thoughts and prayers.
And, and I can feel the prayer. I can.
Good. Um, on a little bit of a lighter note, we're gonna have the first Rock the Block. Uh, week from Friday, hard to believe, on Depot Street, this is our new location because of the construction downtown. And posters are hot off the press, I started taking them out yesterday and, um. It's gonna be the same four net, there'll be a children's area, there'll be food truck, couple of food trucks. Talked to Tyler this afternoon, I think he's excited about having extra people down on Depot, but now we just have to pray for good weather. The band that's, is up the first time's been rained out two years, so I think they think they might be a little jinxed, but, um. I'm have, I've had overwhelming support when I went out to raise more money, because I had to raise more money to have it this year, so. Uh, which is wonderful, what's, when you ask, then people give, so. We're under the chamber, so it says the Chamber of Commerce presents, so I'm under their insurance. So it's worked, it's worked very well, so I thank them a lot for, for supporting that, so you all come and. And enjoy the first Rock the Block from seven to nine. Thank you, Commissioner Strode, Mr. Chanel.
I have nothing.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Cox just passed me a note saying the farmer's market also opens this weekend, so.
And I forgot about it, just.
We know it now, so, okay, the city manager?
Yes, ma'am. Um. Ms. Lane just, uh, reminded me that we're gonna have a, um, Memorial Day fundraiser for the veterans, uh, park. It's gonna be five dollars for a hamburger or hot dog, it's gonna be on Monday, May twenty-sixth. Um, eleven to one, we'll be able to eat and, uh, there'll be a service at one o'clock. So come out and, uh, support the veterans and the memorial.
And that will be on Broadway.
And that will be at the memorial on Broadway.
And if I understand you right, Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, Thompson's Catering and Events is donating everything, Mr. Thompson's a Vietnam. Survivor himself and we gotta get this memorial finished. On Broadway.
Um, also, on, uh, May fourteenth. Um, Pat Johnson in our HR department has put together a great, uh, program on mental health awareness, since this is. So this is for all city employees all day, they can come and talk about mental health, uh, and get some, uh, health education. And awareness on all of that. Uh, because that's gonna be on May fourteenth, here in the commission chambers. We have our budget session scheduled for that day, that means that we will meet at Central Bank. In their order. Yes. For that, and then that allow the employees to have their, um, health awareness fair here in the room. And then, uh, Whitney, um, I just want to point out, um, delivered some, uh, rat cards. For downtown today, I want to pass these out to you, uh, we went down to. The businesses today at lunchtime, delivered these cards and I was, uh, pleasantly. Surprised at how many people said they value these rat cards. So it's really good to, uh, point people to other dining, other attractions, other shopping around town. Um, so thank you, Whitney, for that. And then one last thing, um, I want to introduce, um, Alicia Martin here tonight, this is her first commission meeting, as you know. We hired her in as our grant writer, she has hit the ground running, already had several meetings with, uh, Congressman Barr's office. And each department and she's getting to learn our projects and where she can start finding opportunities for grants, so, thank you for being here.
Again, welcome aboard, we're so glad to have you.
That's all.
Is that all? And, uh, I don't have anything else tonight except to say thank you to all of our employees, our staff. For all you do every day, I don't think we ever say thank you enough. And you are appreciated and then we need to keep communicating with the, with the, uh, communities like we're doing. And keep awareness built on our projects and let's go forward and, uh, cut some ribbons soon. It is our motion to adjourn.
Well, I'd like to make a, a suggestion perhaps. About the May twentieth meeting. Since we are meeting on the twenty-second or. Budget, could we just cancel the May twentieth part and do what we have to do on the twenty-second before we start? Budget session.
So like have a, have a regular meeting, well, it wouldn't be a special meeting.
Yes.
That morning?
Yes.
And then do the budget workshops?
I'm okay with.
That's up to.
Commission? We do, we do need to let the gentleman know, Dane and Smokey, that we've invited them back for the twentieth, and then we'll have to move that.
We can, we can reschedule that.
Yeah. Right. Um, Commissioner Tool, you okay with that?
Surely that will be done by six o'clock, right?
I'm hoping too.
Six o'clock for a work event.
We'll probably be finished around four, forty-thirty.
Be going past four o'clock.
Maybe not then.
I've got it blocked out.
And if we ain't voting by two o'clock.
Thursday, twenty-second.
Yeah.
Okay, is all the commission, is that okay?
The preschool, they're cutting day, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think so, yes.
The preschool, is that the day of the ribbon?
Yes.
Twenty.
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioner Cox made a motion to cancel the May twentieth meeting and instead have a special called.
Well, we already have a special call.
Well, you will, you don't, you don't have to notice that yet, but you will, but I mean, add all of that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Strode, any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed by a like sign? Meeting for May twentieth is canceled.
Yes.
Uh, I did forget, Mr. Dyckman, you still with us?
I am, Mayor, I would just echo.
Mr. Dyckman?
I, I would echo Commissioner Cox's, uh, remarks about, uh, Uncle Linville, the Bucket Puckett, he, he played for Adolf Rupp as well and, uh. Besides being a great basketball player, he's a very good man, good, good. Good family man, I'm, I'm glad to have been. Have known him for all.
Everyone who knew him.
Yep.
Was a good guy. Okay. Where are we, Joy?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, aye? Any opposed by Alexa, motion carries, everyone here but safe and restful.
Work does like two fun things, that's one of those things.
Why do you say?